Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is June 4th, 2007. Before our regular session of council, we do have on our agenda a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant. This is our first hearing. Speaking to this, Mayor Rick Abel.
Thank you. First off, the city of Athens intends to apply to the Ohio Department of Development for funding under the Community Development Block Grant Small Cities Program, CDVG, a federally funded program administered by the state of Ohio. The city is eligible for $93,000 of fiscal year 2007 CDVG funding, providing the city meets application program requirements. This is the first of two informational meetings to provide citizens with pertinent information about the CDVG program, including an explanation of eligible activities and applicable program requirements and application deadlines. The CDVG program can fund a broad range of activities, including economic development projects, street water supply, drainage, and sanitary sewer improvements, park acquisition and improvements, demolition of unsafe structures, rehabilitation of housing and neighborhood facilities. The activities must be designed to primarily benefit low and moderate income persons, aid in the prevention or elimination of slums and blight, or meet an urgent need of the community. In past years, this grant has been used for the Elliott Street Playground Drive stormwater line replacement, and then that was in 1999. From 2000 to 2003, our efforts were directed toward the Court Street area, replacing streetlights, traffic signals, and sidewalks, making the downtown more attractive for safety and the retention of business to the area, making it economically feasible to retain work and living possibilities for people in this area. The traffic signal at Congress and West Union Street was upgraded in 2004. In 2005, the water treatment plant and the wellfields in the west side of the West State Street Ballpark were upgraded for health and safety of citizens using the park as well as employees. This past year, which is not completed yet, is the rehabilitation of the Fort and Fairview stairs, the bottom portion of that which is concrete, and the Arts West Complex boiler replacement. The deadline for this year's CDVG application is July 13th at 5:00 p.m. Must be postmarked. All citizens are encouraged to contact Melissa Knight at 592-3338 and schedule an appointment to discuss any concerns or ideas. $93,000 is broken down in the following manner. We've already bid the Fair Housing Project or Program. That little bid on that from an eligible provider was $3,500. Fifteen percent is used for administration, advertising the hearings, and just doing all the paperwork and everything with it. That's $13,950. That leaves a little over $75,000 for a project, which doesn't do a whole lot in some ways. Yes, Paul?
Our chairman, Debbie Phillips, was talking about doing some more sidewalk repair on Stimson, was that it?
Yes, she has, and Andy's been looking at that. And part of it there is that we did do, not under CDVG, when the bank went in there, we also did the opposite sidewalks from the standpoint of the ADA compliant. And the question really for council is, there are a number of businesses in that area, along with rental property, which I consider business, and to what degree do we want to replace sidewalk? One of the areas of concern that, as I understand, the Atco workshop has, is on Palmer Street, they can get out as far as the bank sidewalk, but then like if they're going to the roller row for an activity, they have to then cross the street at that point, and there are no sidewalks, it's just all parking lot. There's also some concern on further up the street where the old IGA market was, but hopefully we've just received some plans there on that site. I think they came in Friday, and we're going to encourage that developer to redo the sidewalks and handicapped access on that portion of it.
Okay, and I'm aware of the fact that you saw some kind of memo about the repair of the house that the city owns on Central.
It's on my agenda for next time.
Okay. Is that something that could be used with CDVG? Because technically it's a
Yes, it could.
And that was, if I remember, a good chunk of money as well?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Thirty-five?
Thirty-five, forty, something like that.
Okay. So is that something that thing goes well?
That's another possibility, yes.
Just want to put it in the mix there.
Is there any other questions or comments from council on CDVG projects? Potential?
I was passing to Paul a memo that I got from Andy Stone because I went with council member Phillips when we walked that area, and he's broken the repairs down into some areas that he sees as street department slash city responsibility, and quite a few others that are clearly business owner responsibilities, which he would fall back to the code office to try to enforce some compliance there. So I don't think he has prices on them at this point, but as you say, $75,000 doesn't do a whole lot when you're working with streets and concrete and stuff.
In theory, if we're going to get the business people to do this, we still have to do the curb, so some of this money could be for the curbs.
Exactly.
Okay.
So that's why we split it into two different projects last year, because Arts West with a 1965 boiler, clearly we could do some utility savings there, and that's scheduled to be installed, I think, the third week in July. And the other was the deterioration, as reported by the Neighborhood Association, so the stairs between Forest and Fairview, I believe.
Oh, yeah.
Forest and Fairview.
Okay.
Is there any comment from the public?
Come on, Casey.
Well, then we will adjourn this public hearing. Thank you.
Can I keep this?
Yes.
Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, June 4th, 2007. City council is meeting in regular session this evening. We do have a quorum with six of seven members present. I'm not missing anybody, am I? Disposition of minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the regular session meeting minutes of May 21st?
I move to accept the minutes of the session, regular session, May 21st. Second?
Motion second, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been accepted. Communication. Is there any communication anyone would like to share with council?
Jill?
Member Wile?
I received a call from Mr. Buck of the AEP. He was telling me that there had been a series of outages in the past couple of weeks. He said, in fact, right after they did their presentation here, he said it has to do with mostly switching capacity and a breaker system, no, switching and breaker systems, but nothing to do with capacity. I did not call him back. I was only cognizant of two outages in town, so I'm not sure. I haven't had complaints, but
I think two days after their presentation, power on Longview Heights went out. Well, it was out by 4:30 in the afternoon and after midnight before it came on. So I think that would certainly qualify for an outage.
Yeah, I heard some from Mill Street and North Court.
Mill and Palmer and Elliott.
Yeah, traffic lights were all out.
Yeah, it was long. I was worried about my food in the refrigerator at the pantry.
Okay.
Wish all the people that had been lined up to present to us had been out fixing the outages.
They probably were.
In their suits.
In their suits, yes.
Would have been warm.
Okay, I can give him a call back if there's a need to, but again, he called me to let me know that there had been problems and that they're working on it.
And I did mention, I think all council members were copied on an email that I received from Mrs. Chandler on Fort Street regarding the amount of vocal noise that was coming from Bronies and the issues that that has caused her family. I believe that email was sent about 1:00 in the morning.
And the second one at 1:30.
Yeah, so anyway, I did email back that I would make sure all of council was aware and that we would discuss that at the next appropriate committee meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other communications? Reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Hunter?
No report, Mr. President.
Mayor Abel?
Yes, since your first ordinance on the agenda is the street paving and repairs, we did open the bids last week. In summary, with it, the basic bid that we had for, I think, about 13 different streets came in over the engineer's estimate, but within the 10 percent. It's a little, around four hundred, a little under $405,000 of the $450. The crack ceiling, we had two bids on it, but they were over the engineer's 10 percent, primarily because of materials costs. So we'll have to either relook at that, or actually we'll have to rebid it. And then the alternates that we had were came in, I think we'd estimated maybe up to $50,000 on it, and some of them were around $100,000. And a lot of this is, I think, with our estimates, we used, I think, about $112 per cubic ton of asphalt, and most of the vendors are quoting us about $130. And so that makes up for a lot of the differences, but we'll analyze that a little bit more because in addition to those three that were bid, we also had materials to get to work in the Brick Street area, so definitely all the alternates will not be able to be done this year. The base bid will be done and we'll rebid the crack and seal.
Member Wile?
Is there a point where the asphalt gets less expensive than concrete? I think it's, concrete's much higher, right? I mean, when does it come? I know for some
Well, there is a point, but unless you're fully taking out the existing pavement, you really are just putting an inch or two of asphalt back over a resurfaced road. Now, if you were going in and making a total takeout like we did on East State Street, you'd want to consider asphalt versus concrete based upon pricing. But if you're just doing a overlay, which almost all of these are, because there's no new roads being built, you have to pretty well go with the old surfaces there because you can't just put down, if you put down four inches of concrete or six on top of asphalt, you'd mess up all your curbs and gutters and everything else, so.
Other comments for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor Abel. Ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 5107, an ordinance authorizing street paving and repairs. Member Flowers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of O 5107.
Second.
Thank you. As council is aware, this is an ordinance, this is the annual street paving ordinance that we see each year upon going on the street tour. This year, like every other year, Andy uses the ODOT Design Rating System and also takes into account the type of road, severity, and the extent of the distress to prioritize which areas of city streets need to have work done. This year, some of those on the primary list include West Union Street, East State Street, Hoover Street, but that's being done by ODOT, Curtis Street, Longview Heights, Cable Lane, Dairy Lane, Richland Avenue, Fremont, Verona, North Lancaster, and North Court Street. And as the ordinance reads, the amount to expend is up to $450,000 for this year's street paving and repairs.
Member Wile?
I would point out that Andy also tells us that we could spend a lot more money to repair a lot more streets any given day or any given year.
Further discussion on the ordinance. Member Bain?
I would say that we could also point out that there is appreciably more money in this particular ordinance than in the recent past. So we are spending considerably more, even though we could spend even more and more.
I don't think there's any limit to what one could spend.
But we are spending, took a change, more than we did before, and within the last whole, well, at least five years.
I think so. Further discussion. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 5107?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 5207, this ordinance amends Athens City Code Title VII, the Traffic Code, Chapter 7.05, the Parking Regulations, Section 7.05.26, Regulation of City Parking Garage. This was introduced by Member Patterson, but will you speak to it? Member Flowers?
I will. Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance O 5207.
Second.
Thank you. As council is aware, this is an ordinance to change the time in the garage in correspondence with the amount of money to match those meters that are on the street. So instead of 22 minutes for every quarter, it'll be 30 minutes for every quarter, and that, sort of the idea behind that was to get more streets, or more cars in off the streets and into the garage and utilizing those spaces.
Further discussion. Member Wile?
First of all, I'd like to thank Carol and Amy for putting this together, Transportation Committee, and also that we're aware of the fact that this will help the uptown merchants a little bit, because it'll take some of the cars off the front, off the street, Court Street, and that eventually we're going to have to look at a comprehensive overall view of what to do about the parking uptown, because we are having changes coming at us.
Other comments? Member Sands?
We have an ordinance coming up that's going to authorize some payments on the debt for the parking garage repairs that we just made, and so this ordinance could result in less money coming into the garage fund for future payments. However, there's also some hope that although an individual meter will take in less money, more people, as Member Wiles says, more people will come. So we're kind of in a balancing act here with regards to income, but we do want more utilization in the garage.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 5207?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 5407, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for a Community Development Block Grant for calendar year 2008, which is federal fiscal year 2007. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 5407. The title of the ordinance is fairly self-explanatory. This is a block grant, the Small Cities Program, which would, for which we are able to receive about $93,000. Once you remove some of the administrative fees and some other contingencies, that would give us about $75,000 to expend for this particular grant in 2008. We just had our first public hearing tonight to begin the process of choosing what activities we would like to fund. We spoke about some possible sidewalk repairs along the Stimson Avenue corridor, what were some of the others we spoke about?
Central Avenue?
Central Avenue.
House. City owns a house on Central Avenue.
Yeah, the city owns a house on Central Avenue, exactly, which needs repairs. We will have another public hearing, which I used to have the date for
June 25th, I think.
Yes.
In June, June 25th, after which council will discuss and pass an ordinance regarding the activities, assuming we pass this one.
Member Wile?
And the mayor did point out the deadline for this is July 13th, I believe, so we'll have it in time.
Further discussion. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 5407?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 5507, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application and enter into an agreement for the fiscal year 2007-08 Drug Abuse Resistance Education Law Enforcement Grant, the DARE program. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 5507.
Second.
This ordinance will authorize the mayor to apply for the DARE law enforcement grant, which makes available up to 50 percent of salary costs for an officer who is dedicated to this program. The officer who is dedicated to the DARE program, who would visit schools and work with school-aged children, basically to encourage them not to use drugs, but it turns into a broader work with the schoolchildren, and it's a very popular program in Athens. However, this officer is not 100 percent tied to this program. They still do other patrol and enforcement activities.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 55? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 5607, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and execute an emergency shelter grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Development and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Good Works, Inc. Again, member Sands?
Mr. President, again, I move adoption of ordinance 5607.
Second.
This is authorizing the mayor to submit an application for this emergency shelter grant, which is a grant which comes from the Ohio Department of Development, but a requirement of the grant is that it be administered through a local municipality, which would be Athens. I talked to Keith Wasserman, who is the director of Good Works. This grant in the year 2007 would bring $58,300 to the homeless shelters in Athens. And some statistics from 2006 calendar year, at Timothy House, which is the homeless shelter run by Good Works, about, almost 3,000 nights of shelter were provided during that year. Anywhere from 11 to 16 people per night required temporary shelter here. This is a grant that we have worked with Good Works to acquire for several years. Most grants include an administrative fee, which can be collected by the agency handling it. The city takes no administrative fee for here, it's passed entirely to Good Works.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 56? Member Wile?
Good Works, Timothy House is one of the ones in my ward. They've been around for a long time and actually almost represent a stable node in my neighborhood because they're helpful, they're courteous, and as I say, in a transitory population on Central Avenue or that area, environs and second and everything, it's nice to have those neighbors.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 56?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. O 5707, here we go. An ordinance authorizing the filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the US DOT Federal Transit Administration, FTA, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 USC, Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant application approval for the period from January 1, 08, through December 31, 08. This ordinance was introduced by Member Patterson. Member Flowers, will you speak to it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance O 5707.
Second.
And if I could say anymore, I would, but I think it's all pretty much there.
There's just nothing left to say.
It's the annual grant that runs the busing system.
Other comments? No one would dare. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 57?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. On to ordinances for second reading. O 5907, an ordinance closing portions of Court Street from Union to Washington on Saturday, September 8, '07, from 11:00 a.m. till 2:05 p.m. for the first annual business fair. Ordinance 6007, an ordinance closing portions of Court Street and Washington Street on Friday, June 22 and July 27 and August 17, '07, for a cruise in and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 6207, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to purchase a two-ton dump truck for the street department. On to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 6407, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $200,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of renovating the city's parking garage and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, as I mentioned a little while ago, we are paying off the debt. We borrowed money to make repairs on the city parking garage about five years ago. This ordinance will authorize the administration to purchase bonds in the amount of about $2,000. Right now, we owe $350,000 on this. We're paying off about $150,000. Within that $150,000, there are bond council fees and some other, some interest also, so we're actually paying off about $100,000 here.
Is there further comments on ordinance 64? Member Wile?
I see in, Dr. Heck mentioned that was about 9 percent, looks like, in Section 1 for the bond.
Section, yeah.
Okay. And hopefully we can pay it down more next year.
Other comments? Ordinance 6507, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $1.7 million of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring and constructing improvements to East State Street and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, this is a similar ordinance. This is to pay our, to pay part of our indebtedness for the significant upgrade work that was recently done on the East State Street from the old, from the intersection of the bypass east. At the moment, we owe about $2 million on that project. We are authorizing the administration to purchase bonds for the amount of about $1,700,000, which means we would be paying off about $300,000 on this debt.
Is there further comments on ordinance 65?
You keep saying purchasing bonds, we're actually purchasing notes in anticipation of
I'm sorry. It's a
A fine distinction, but one that needed to be mentioned.
Thank you.
Other comments? Ordinance 6607, an ordinance consolidating two bond anticipation note issues of the city of Athens, Ohio, and two a consolidation note issue and establishing the terms of such consolidated note issue and declaring an emergency. It's got lots of emergencies tonight, member Sands.
And, Mr. President, this is just as it says, this is a consolidation of this issuance of notes, hoping to go toward the bonds. We can get a better interest rate by combining these two activities, so our bond council has provided this ordinance for us to
Other comments on ordinance 66? Ordinance 6707, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands?
Mr. President, this ordinance has several sections that we talked about at committee last week. First of all, it appropriates from the unappropriated balance a sum of $9,000 to the Internal Service Fund. This is to purchase a lift for the service garage. We talked about a hydraulic lift there that is quickly becoming unsafe, and service, the Internal Service Fund has about $4,000 toward this purchase, which is somewhere between $12,000 and $13,000, so we need to appropriate this money. It also appropriates $25,000 to the general fund in order to pay the costs for anticipated site plan reviews. Any development that occurs within the city has to present plans for our review. We contract with an engineering firm to review those plans. This money is reimbursed to the city
This money is reimbursed to the city when the developer receives their permits and begins the development, so, but we need to have the funds up front to cover this cost. We are seeing a lot of proposed activity within the city, so these are funds that we had not anticipated earlier in the year. Also, there's appropriation of $33,922 to the Community Corrections Act Fund, transaction class 100, which is basically salaries, and $3,614 to the Community Corrections Act Fund 235, which would be material costs. This is a, Community Corrections Act grant is a grant that is, that is sought after and awarded to the municipal court, but because they are part of the city, it needs to come through us. That grant runs on a calendar year from July to July. We, in our earlier budget, appropriated 30, approximately $35,000. This, the court has now received the grant for the ensuing year, so we're appropriating approximately $35,000 for that. The second part of this section moves $2,200 from the existing Community Corrections Act Fund, from transaction class 200, 300, which is materials, into transaction class 100, salaries. In the existing fund, the courts have not utilized the money in the, in the materials fund, that they are short a little bit in their salary fund, so we're authorizing a movement within that fund. This will need to be suspended on second reading in two weeks because, well, we're talking about July for this Community Corrections Act Fund, so.
Other comments? Member Weil.
I assume we'll have a full council to suspend rules, right, next time? Yes, everybody will be here?
I won't be here.
You won't be here?
No.
Okay.
As long as we have six.
Okay, that'll work.
We still have two meetings.
And they're all in favor.
Yeah.
Is that all? Ordinance 6807, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations, Section 29.06.05 Insurance. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, this was brought to our attention by Steve Pearson. The, we used to have specific insurance amounts related to demolition of any buildings, and at some point, it was changed to say that the amount would be established by ordinance, which had not been done separately. We checked, and the rates have increased since we, the older rates that we had in there, and the recommended amount now is $300,000 per person and $1 million per claim. The CSL means combined single liability.
On to announcements and other business. We have a motion to remove from the table, ordinance 6107, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title VII Traffic Code, Section 7.04.40, processions and parades permit required. Member Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to remove ordinance 06107 from the table.
Second.
I move to amend by substitution.
Second.
Motion.
Wait, wait, we have to vote on it. We have to take it off.
We have to vote on removing from the table.
You have a motion and a second.
Then you can, okay. Motion and a second to remove from the table, ordinance 6107. Further discussion on removal from the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been removed from the table.
Thank you. I move to amend by substitution, ordinance 06107.
Second.
The reason for the amendment is, as I discussed upon introducing this to council two weeks ago, was that I needed to get legal advice from Gary as to what could go into the code under the Title VII for the processions and parades. Upon his recommendation, the two changes that I have handed to you tonight fall under Section 70440, Part B, which discusses a fee of $25 to cover the expenses incident to processing, processing the application for a parade permit shall be paid to the chief of police when filing an application for a parade permit. The other change is in Section F, which just takes out that list and puts language that says the chief of police, in his or her discretion, may waive the permit fee and/or create an exemption from payment for up to five overtime officers. Those are the changes that were made and as advised by the law director.
Discussion on the amendment only. Member Bishop.
I guess I'm curious what the rationale is for waiving the fee. I mean, what, there must be some thought about what types of organizations might request this that we, the chief of police, might want to waive the fee for.
What, waive the $25 fee?
Yeah.
Well, you, remember, you didn't have a fee in there, period. I'm the one, I just added a fee.
Right, right, right. Well, I like the fee.
Pardon?
I like the fee. I like the fee. But I was wondering what the waiving is.
The question was that if you're having, some of it was on the list before that you provided the exemption for, and the more expensive item would be the, the fee for the officers. Was the, was it national parades and things of that?
City children, yeah.
Yeah, things of that nature. So, there may be public service items that come up that would be appropriate to, if you're going to waive the, the fee for the five officers, you might as well waive the $25 application fee.
Right. Well, I, I just think it would be nice to have some language in there, kind of as a policy, what type of things, because, I mean, anybody would say, can I waive the fee? I mean, wouldn't they? So, it would just, it'd be nice to have language that said for specific, you know, events that are very much in the public interest and would be a, would like to see some language on that.
Usually those fall in the realm of policy decisions that are usually left to the administration.
Okay.
But, I mean, you can put those kind of things in if you, you want.
Few words.
My advice, if it's, if it's something that causes, you know, council doesn't make it really in favor, I would just take the exemption language out, period, quite frankly, and let everybody.
Pay. It's only 20, yeah.
No.
Overtime is a lot.
Overtime's a lot for the five officers.
Right, right.
Member Phillips.
Mr. President, I think one of the possible exemptions that was discussed was funerals, that that might be considered to be a parade, if, you know, you're stopping traffic for it to go through, and you wouldn't want to charge people for that.
Other comments? Member Flowers.
In the original, funerals was actually removed from this part of the code.
Okay.
So, that's not, that doesn't apply, this doesn't apply to the funerals.
Point still stands.
Yeah, funeral is taken out.
Okay. So, member Bing.
As it's currently written, then, the overtime would go into the budget and be repaid to the overtime line. Is that right? And then it would be, could be cashed out any time in the next decade, four decades, right?
Four decades.
Two decades at a higher rate.
The problem you have is when, when money comes back in to the city, it will come back into the general fund, unappropriated, so you would have to appropriate it. Is that what you're asking me?
Well, I just, and the other thing is, if they're cashing it out at a higher rate, I mean, what's the, you know, 10 years down the road?
Oh, you're talking about if the, we waive the.
Yes.
Waive the overtime and they get comp time or something?
Yeah.
I think what she's saying is we, we shell it out at $10, and then when we pay it, it's $12.
Maybe more.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, yeah.
It's just, I wonder about exemptions and all that. I just wonder why we should charge.
I guess I'm reading, I'm reading the exemptions that you put in there differently. The, the way I read the exemptions would be the person applying for the parade permit would not pay the city for the five hours of overtime for the five, of the five officers. The city always pays overtime to the officers. So, what we're waiving is, me as a person coming in saying I want to pay, we have to pay the city, so the overtime is not going to be administered any differently than it is currently, right now.
It's a city cost.
It'll just be out there at the bottom.
Mayor Abel.
There's a provision in the FOP agreement with the police department that addresses the payment of comp time in February, I believe it is, and I think you have to pretty much wipe it out.
Yeah, we did do that in the last, last year.
Because we see it carried forward. So, therefore, every year, whatever got accumulated during the previous year gets paid.
Remember that, yeah.
But I think it's the chief's discretion, too, and if he wants to pay him overtime rather than comp time, well, the crute time.
Well, the issue with bringing it up was that you carried comp time for 40 years, 20 years, and you can't.
Oh, I was exaggerating.
You can't, you have to get paid off the next year.
Right.
Under that contract.
Remember that.
But the only thing we're exempting is an organization paying the overtime, the passing.
And how many do we have in a year? Just end my question here.
Well, how many parades?
How many permits do we issue? Five, six?
Six. I mean.
Oh, probably more than that.
You've got, you've got Memorial Day parade, you've got a Fourth of July parade, you've got the Veterans Day parade, you've got homecoming parade, you've got the Uptown Holiday Parade in November. We consider the Athens Marathon a parade.
The baseball.
Because we are doing, this is a parade of runners. And at times, we've done the city's children holiday, but right now, we're containing that all within the parking lot of the community center. But it used to go out onto the street, now it no longer does. So, there's six. And then you also talk about, in another section here, if you did it on a sidewalk, which would be, like Take Back the Night and some other events that go along.
I'm quickly letting this become a committee meeting, and we need to recognize that the motion before us is an amendment by substitution. Speaking to the amendment. I'm sorry?
Sandlot's another one.
I'm sorry?
Sandlot's another one. Two years on that one.
Speaking to the amendment only. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, the question about funerals, I pulled out the ordinance that we tabled, and it does have the language about funerals stricken through, and it has part of Section B stricken through, and that strike through is not in the substitution. Was it your intention that we still, so, I don't know if they, would them remain in code?
Which part are we talking about? It's still.
Says processions, but.
The amendment. Okay, if we're amending by substitution, though, I thought we kind of replaced the whole thing.
Section B, though, says funeral homes are exempt.
Exempt from needing a permit.
Section B of the substituted amendment.
Everything remains the same except these two.
Okay. She just, yeah, took out all the.
Member Bishop.
Okay. Well, it seems to me that $25 is a very small fee, and I guess, I was wondering what the logic was. I mean, that's, barely pays processing time. It would seem that, you know, that a little higher fee might be useful. I mean, even $100. And I, and I will say again, that I just think part of our job is to just provide some guidance, and I, I would like to see some language about, you know, things in, you know, of a public service nature, or et cetera, or that it would provide, you know, a hardship for the nonprofit organization that would be doing it. I just think it's helpful to provide some language that guides the decisions.
Member Bing. I'm sorry, I thought you wanted to speak a moment ago.
No, 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 we've already done that, Dan.
Okay. Motion and a second to amend by substitution, ordinance 6107. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The ordinance has been amended, five, one, and read for the first time. Opportunity for citizens to speak on items that have not been covered on.
Mr. President.
Yes?
Some of us have other announcements and other business.
Isn't it? I'm sorry, you're right. An unusual item to be right in there, so I apologize for skipping past. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, I have a memo from the mayor here regarding an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Michelle Drebold as an alternate to the Board of Zoning Appeals, at the mayor's recommendation.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. Okay.
Congratulations, Michelle.
I'd like to have a meeting, unless nobody else wants one, in which case I'll skip it to city services. I've got some agenda items for Debbie.
Okay. City services, all?
Environment, but I, I'm not sure what's going to be on it yet.
Agenda yet to be announced? Member Phillips.
Planning and development, and we have a recommendation for approval of the final PUD for Grand Vista University Estates. We need to come back to talking about the B2D rezoning uptown. I think we need to talk again about substantial damage, which we discussed in our last committee meeting, and site plan review.
And so, as a member of the committee, we'll have the 500-foot map as well.
Yes.
And we will also have the parking spaces are already outlined, right?
Member Flowers.
Transportation committee meeting, I don't know, but something will be on there.
I'm sure. Member Sands.
And Oswald.
The ever-present.
The ever-present.
Okay. Any other announcements and other business? Now, unto an opportunity for citizens to speak on any legislative items or city services that we have not covered on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak before council? Please.
I guess I think you're.
We need for you to come up so that people can hear what you have to say, and council rules allow that you can speak for up to three minutes, and we ask you to give us your name and address.
I'm Troy Greerino from Union Street. Sort of an off-the-cuff remark, sorry for the informality of it, but it's fresh on my mind, because I recently received a violation, a $20 ticket for having parked presumably twice within a 24-hour period in what was deemed to be not a non-adjacent space, even though there were no cars within a, a stretch on Union Street, one of the stretches across from DHL, where there's not, there are no designated spaces or anything that marks one, one space from another. And it's, it's the second time, and one happened a long time ago, that I had kind of forgotten about similar circumstances in the summer. It was West State Street where I parked my car, moved the car for some errands, came back within 24 hours, and literally hundreds of feet on both sides of the original space, and the car probably was overlapping or pretty close to the first time it was parked, and issued a $20 violation for that. No one was, I mean, talking about, you know, five residents within like a mile at this point in the summer. And, and $20 is a lot of money for lots of us, and we don't have spare 20s sitting around to feed into a, a policy that I really, at best, I think, is ill-conceived, especially for large portions of the city. I know that's certainly debatable in, in parts where it was more contentious, where people kind of store their cars, and full-time residents couldn't get their cars into spaces. So, I, I guess my, my question in short is what kind of attention, if any, by this council is being given in the immediate future or in the present to addressing that policy in particular, as it relates to parking in non-adjacent spaces and the like? I know there's been discussion of the hang tags and that sort of thing. I just wonder what specifically, can, can you tell us about where that is and what we're doing?
One of the things that we don't do is address questions, and I know a lot of people have trouble understanding why we don't do that during this, but if we were to answer it, we would probably tell you that that has been discussed at length by member Flowers. We, certainly, at her parking committee, there are ongoing discussions with that kind of thing being part of it, and I would encourage you to attend the next parking committee meeting, and if you could see member Flowers before you leave, I'm sure she could get an email address to send you on when we will be having that. I guess it's really easy to catch someone when there's no other cars around. Member Weil, at, at risk of violating council rules of answering and talking.
Maybe needed something for agenda.
Yes, as presumed by my earlier statement, we'll add that to the agenda, and maybe if you want to come back next week, we can further discuss it.
Yeah. But we appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming to us.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments before council this evening? Seeing none and having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.